Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock and I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Please help me welcome Dr. Kenny Vaughn, Principal of JH House Elementary School, to introduce our inspirational speaker, who would also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, Vice Chairwoman Duncan. Good evening, Dr. Oats. It's in the Steam Board of Education. It is my distinct privilege this evening to introduce two students from JH House Elementary, Olivia Evans and Lauren Evans, who will be sharing an original piece that they authored entitled "The Iris Flower."
Hi, my name is Lauren Evans. I go to JH House Elementary School and I am in Ms. Johnson's third grade class.
Hi, my name is Olivia Evans. I go to JH House Elementary School. I'm in Ms. Wheeler's first grade class.
The title of her story is "The Little Iris Flower."
It's one of time there was a woman named Pines Spirit that lived in a small and empty house. She had dreams of having the most beautiful garden in all the land with kindness.
As she sadly sat on the floor, she wondered how she would ever begin to have a beautiful garden when all she had was a house full of webs, no money for seeds, and a hopeless heart. One afternoon, she went for a walk to get some fresh air. She questions if her dream would ever come true, if her beautiful garden would ever be. On her walk, she comes upon a river and stares into her reflection. As the water ripples, a wise man appears. He talks to her and says that all she needs to have a beautiful garden is faith, determination, and discipline. At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention of the United States of America, the Constitution stands, one nation under God, visible, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. That was very beautiful. Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented has been made by Ms. Duncan and a second by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we welcome the General Ray Davis Golden Eagles Community and Mr. Scott Stanton, the Principal of General Ray Davis School, to provide to us a presentation.
Well, good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Board of Education, Dr. Oats, and our Cabinet and guests. I'm Scott Stanton, Principal at General Ray Davis Middle School, and it's my honor to speak to you about two of our advanced academic opportunities that we offer our students at Davis Middle School. The first is our PC Research Program, and this program was founded by Mrs. Caroline Snell and is currently taught by Mr. Matt Cook, one of our Program Challenge teachers. The Research Program began in 2016 as a way to offer additional support to students with a high interest in research and for students considering application to the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. This class was originally designed for gifted designated students, but the class quickly expanded to the school's high achieving students and provides students with a more rigorous educational experience. This class currently meets during the connections periods on each grade level. The objectives of our Research Program is to prepare students for collegiate level work on the high school level, expose students to research practices through project-based learning experiences in both science and humanities that are specifically geared towards Science Fair and National History Day. They compete in local, regional, state, and national research competitions, and that this program also engages students to develop thinking that is critical, creative, and analytic. During the research process, students are taught a number of foundational skills and advanced skills that are a part of the four core content areas and are necessary for success as they create their research projects. These skills include information literacy, note-taking, source analysis, thesis statement formulation, citing textual evidence, experimental design, and basic statistical testing. These experiences prepare our students to be successful in the rigorous coursework of the Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment Courses that they will experience on the high school level. Since the inception of the Research Program, our students at Davis have been highly successful winning on the local, regional, state, and national levels. Most recently, Davis Middle School students competed in the Regional Science Fair at the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. Three of our projects earned third place, three projects earned second place, and seven projects earned first place. Thank you. We also had students receive specialty awards. Two of our students received the Office of Naval Research Award for their project, and one of our students won the U.S. Metric Association Award for his project. In addition, we have had several students over the past few years earn state and national awards through the National History Day Program, including a 10th place award at the national competition, which happened during the pandemic. So we're really proud of our students for their efforts there. Next is our Robotics and Engineering Program, which is taught by Mrs. Sony Galla, who is an original member of our Davis Middle School staff. The Engineering Program began in 2006 and added robotics three years later in 2009. Students in this program meet each day during our first period Eagle Learning Time, and students are selected for membership by Mrs. Galla based on teacher recommendations, student experience in engineering and/or robotics, and previous year membership. The objectives of our Engineering Robotics Program is to expose students to robotics and engineering concepts through preparing and competing in various competitions, and these competitions are listed in front of you, but they include the First LEGO League at the regional, superregional, and state levels, the East Metro Technology Competition and Fair, which was held at Rockdale Career Academy just a few weekends ago, the Georgia Technology State Competition, and the snapping shoal solar car competition. With our robotics team, it requires a lot of teamwork. As a team, they must research the current topic of the First LEGO League, and they complete a presentation of their research. Next, they must display the First LEGO League core values, which include teamwork, having fun, discovery, and inclusion. Next, students must develop the technical design and complete the programming of the robot so that finally they can go into competition and perform missions with these robots, and they only have a two-and-a-half-minute timeframe to be able to do this. Needless to say, these activities require a strong team who can think critically, analytically, and creatively throughout the process. One of the fun parts that they have in addition to working with the robots and each other is that they get to design their own T-shirts based on the theme of the year. So these are some of the student-designed T-shirts that have been made in the last few years. These pictures show our robotics teams at different times of the competition. Students are required to build and program their robots to specific tasks on the competition board, which you see in three of the four pictures. One wrong line of programming could cause the team to lose points, while the correct programming could lead to victory. I also want to point out that during our virtual and hybrid time, our students were still able to compete and participate in the robotics team. Students checked out kits from the school and received virtual instruction. They practiced and did their challenges at home, and then when we returned to hybrid learning, students were able to practice with their robots in a socially-distanced area. This group, the year of the pandemic in 2020, 2021, won the Grand Championship and Research Award at the regional level. Some of our achievements of the First LEGO League robotics team include six-time regional winners, four-time regional champions, nine-time superregional winners, one-time superregional champions, and three-time state participants. So a lot of great competition and great work from our students. These are just some of our pictures of our winners, and these are students who have now moved on to high school, so they are at Heritage and Salem, Rockdale, and the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, continuing their studies in a lot of the science and STEM areas. Also, our students participate in the Technology Fair and Competition, and this year, we had six first-place winners just from our Davis Middle School Engineering Program in the areas of 3D modeling, internet application, graphic design, and device modification. Inclusive of our Engineering Program, our entire school overall won the most first-place awards in this year's East Metro Regional Technology Fair with 13 first-place awards, and our students also earned seven second-place awards and four third-place awards. Needless to say, our students have worked very hard and have worked to do more advanced work through engineering, robotics, and research, and we're really proud of the things that they have done and the accomplishments that they have made, and more importantly, the impact that they're going to have on this world as they move into high school and beyond. So thank you very much. Any questions at all for me? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
Next, I want to ask Dr. Oats, Ms. Duncan, and Ms. Jones to please join me in recognizing some deserving students of their outstanding accomplishments. Please.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Board members, and our guests. We are glad to have some students here this evening with us that have done outstanding things, and we are going to recognize, starting with Davis Middle School students. Members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated honored the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by engaging in a day of service in their communities and around the world to promote peace and community through love in keeping with Dr. King's life and teaching. The Chi Tau Omega chapter teamed up with students from General Ray Davis Middle School to provide artwork to five nursing homes they were servicing on MLK Day. The student artwork, which you can see on the screen, was donated to Westbury Rehab, Pruitt Health, Riverside, Benton House, and Morningside, The Oaks, and will appear in an upcoming AKA National Magazine. The artwork was created around the theme "Freedom and Service." Tonight, we recognize the talent of our young artists and their contributions to a day of service. Students, when I call your name, if you'll come up and get a certificate, and when we have everybody up here, we'll do a picture, a group picture, and parents, you're welcome to come behind me and get a picture as well. We'll also put all our photos from this evening on our social media. First, Hoppy Harris. Melena Keifel. Kimberly Brooks. Haley Vassal. Jordan Allen. And Camilla Prince. Paparazzi behind me. All right, parents, I will duck. Just let me get a picture here, too, and then I'll duck out of your way. All right. Smiles, everyone, smiles. Keep smiling. You good? All right. Good job. Congratulations. Do this one next. Quest Bridge believes intelligent talent and motivation, nobility, and grit are distributed across the entire economic spectrum of America's youth. Many elite colleges and universities, Fortune 500 corporations, and top graduate schools sincerely strive to embrace the country's most talented, determined, and self-motivated students, but they often lacked the reach to attract appropriate candidates from all socioeconomic populations. Some of our brightest young minds are well-suited to opportunities but unconnected for simple lack of information, mentorship, and other surmountable barriers. Quest Bridge is a powerful platform that connects the nation's brightest students who have experienced financial hardship with leading institutions of higher education and further opportunities. Tonight, we recognize a student from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology who is the recipient of a full-tuition Quest Bridge Scholarship to Brown University. Congratulations, Destiny Smith Sarter. Congratulations, Destiny. Two. The Posse Model works for both students and college campuses and is rooted in the belief that a small, diverse group of talented students, a Posse, carefully selected and trained, can serve as a catalyst for individual and community development. Every year, thousands of students compete for a Posse scholarship. Posse works with a network of public high schools and community-based organizations in 20-plus cities who nominate talented and diverse students. Posse helps prepare scholars for college through its pre-collegiate training, and once on-campus, supports scholars through regular meetings with Posse staff and faculty mentors. This, combined with full-tuition scholarships from their partner colleges and a range of other supports, ensures that scholars don't just graduate, they thrive. Posse graduates come from urban backgrounds and hold degrees from top colleges and universities across the country. While their professional paths vary, vary widely, they become doctors, investment bankers, teachers, lawyers, scientists, artists, entrepreneurs. They are all united by a shared experience as participants in the Posse program. Tonight, we recognize two students from Rockdale County High School who were chosen for full-tuition Posse scholarships and will be attending Texas A&amp;M in the fall. Congratulations first to Jordan Foster. And next, our congratulations to Justin Sterling. Congratulations.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call for a recess as we congratulate our students and their families on their awards. as we congratulate our students and their families on their awards. It is now 7:30. Calling the meeting back to order. There are no visitor comments tonight. It's now time for the superintendent's updates. Dr. Oats?
Ten presentation.
Dr. Oats, be nice.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oats, board member. So I'll be going over the final financial reports for the month of January. All right, the revenue for January is 10.9 million. The revenue year to date is 131.8, which is 72.8% of our budget. Last, last year, January, we received 11.3 million, 125.9 million year to date, which is 73.5% of our budget. Expenditures for the month of January, 15.5 million, 107.4 million year to date, which is 58.2% of our budget. Last January, we expended 14.2 million, 98.7 million year to date, which was 57.6% of our budget. Outstanding commerces, $1,781,067. Our fund balance at the end of January is just approximately 63 million. Last January, we're at 56 million approximately. Our asset, 63 points, just a little over 63 million. A lot of our abilities cleared. Our fund balance is 63 million approximately. Any questions?
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
All right, the board has reviewed the minutes for all of the board meetings held in January. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes for the month of January?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second, Akita.
A motion to approve by Ms. Duncan, a second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. All right, so do we have any updates, Dr. Oats?
Yes, just very quickly, we concluded our open forum with the superintendent sessions on last evening at Heritage High School. It was very well attended, I think, and some excellent questions. But that was the case for all of the forums. So I had the opportunity to communicate and chat with a number of participants, both staff and families, and they were very appreciative of the opportunity for engagement. So it was very constructive. I just want to quickly say we received great news this week on several different fronts. First, we received word that we have 17 Governor's Honors Program semifinalists. That's exciting. This is the highest number of semifinalists named in four years. And kudos to our teachers, students, and our advanced academics teams. Second, all three of our high schools were named AP honor schools. Our high schools have consistently made this list for several years. Now, however, in recent years, not all of our high schools were recognized as AP honor schools. So we're excited to have all of our high schools recognized as meeting specific AP honor school criteria this year. This also affirms our collective efforts at ensuring equitable achievement gains across all our high schools. Thirdly, we received AP teacher training grants in the amount of $700 each for our traditional high schools and programs, a total grant award of $4,200. These grants are very beneficial in covering the cost of training additional teachers to teach our AP curriculum. And you know that we had a 6% increase in the proportion of our students scoring at three, four, and five. We've increased our AP enrollment and our AP course offerings. I think we're collectively beginning to see the, the fruits of that labor of our teaching and learning and school performance and accountability departments, our teachers, our students, so we're excited about that. And that is superintendent's update, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Dr. Oats. There is no old business and there is no new business. Last week, the cabinet provided an extensive overview of all action items and the board voted to place the items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve those items under the consent agenda?
I move.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Palmer and second by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion to go into executive session has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Mrs. Jones. All in favor? Motion carries. Yes, please.
Go right to the left.
Good night.
Hi Cindy.
Good night.
But where are we going?
Go walk in, say yeah, and walk back out, right?
Cut the mask off and it's been a whole time.
I told you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Okay.
First thing, we're not to talk right. Frank, give me one.
I like the food.
We're, we're trying on our, uh, remember they would come to our house when I was on board. We've been there.
I wore my sneakers today. I had a lot to do. I'm big.
I had a lot to do today. I'm wearing sneakers.
I did.
It is now 7:44 and the board is back into open session. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Tanya Price, currently the academic coach at CJ Hicks Elementary School, to Assistant Principal of JH House Elementary School, effective July the 1st, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meet? A motion has been made to adjourn the meeting by Mr. Barksdale and second by Mrs. North. Um, all in favor? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.